Good evening. I now call to order the 5:15 PM public hearing to adopt the 2024-2025 tentative millage rate and budget. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now do roll call.
Colleen Conklin, present.
Sharon Moser here.
Kristi Chung.
Will Ferry, present.
Sally Hunt.
LaShawka Moore.
Okay, so now we will move on to 2.01. At this time, we will move to the agenda. 2.01 and 2.0 presented by Ms. Patty Warmack on the 2024-25 tentative millage rate and budget.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Furry Board members, and Superintendent Moore. This is the truth and millage process that allows taxpayers to come to see our presentation, to see what has changed with our 24-25 millage and budget. This meeting is required by Florida statutes. I will start with 2.01 by just making a few statements that are required to be stated during this board meeting. The millage rates for 24-25 are as follows. The required local effort, or RLE, is 3.117 mils. The discretionary operating is 0.748 mils, and the capital outlay is 1.5 mils. The combined total millage is 5.365, which again is the lowest millage in over 25 years. The total millage is a 3.17% change of the rollback rate. And just to state for the public, we are the only taxing authority that is not allowed to set our own millage in the county. On item 2.02, if we can pull up that presentation, please. This is a presentation for the budget and trend for 2024-25. I'm not going to go into too much detail, as we just had a detailed budget meeting on July 23rd. That meeting is available to be viewed by the public on our district website. Starting on page two, general funds. Just a few points to note, the total budget here has not changed. What we did do per discussion at our June 23rd meeting is we separated out the state sources at the top. So it's very clear what part is FEFP and what part is the family empowerment scholarship. Previously, the 54 million and 10 million were just combined as one line. So those are now separated out to show the scholarships very clearly. And as you can see, in the bottom half of expenditures, the scholarships are also separated out in the second line as well.
Patty, can I, Chair, may I ask a question? Or you want me to wait till the end?
Let's wait. We're going to have time. Would you like to answer the questions now on this one? Okay, we'll go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Conklin.
Just, and thank you for adding that, Patty. I think that's really appreciated to do that. I'm curious, what would, because I would have thought it would have been under transfers out. Is there a reason, what would be under transfers out?
Sure. The only thing under transfers out is inter-fund transfers. So transfers from capital fund to pay for portables, insurance maintenance, or transfers from capital fund into debt service to pay for the debt payments.
Understood. Okay. Thank you, though. That is very helpful.
Just a few other items to note here. Our projected ending fund balance at July 30th, 2024, is 9.7 million. And as you can see from the second line at the bottom, we are projected to use about $200,000 to balance our budget, and our fund balance at June 30th, 2025, is approximately 9.5 million. The next slide is just a summary of the family empowerment scholarship. Since it started with legislation in 2020, you can see the drastic increases in the number of students and scholarship funds, and how much it's changed each year.
Another question. Do we, and this is more, I think, for you, Superintendent Moore. Do we do any communicating with our families who leave? Or do we have the ability to do any communication with the families that take the family empowerment scholarship?
So right now, we do not have any structured communication outside of our families who are doing traditional homeschool. But as these processes are changing, I anticipate that changing of just making sure that we have a means of communication with families around what are the things that they can continue to come to Flagler schools to be a part of.
Yeah, I think as we see this population continue to grow, because it probably will continue to grow, just for the nature of choice, right? That we figure out some way to continue to try to do outreach or communication with those families and get creative about how we can reintroduce them to our schools, or at least at a minimum, keep them abreast of some of the things that are happening within the school district.
And also remembering, like, some of these families are students that have not been a part of Flagler schools. They are now just electing to take on the voucher. So they may have already been a part of a different learning opportunity. But now those dollars are beginning to follow those students in that way.
Yes, thank you for stating that, because I think a lot of times, the public doesn't understand that, that many of these students, the 1250, may never have even attended Flagler schools ever. So, okay, interesting. I just think that that's going to be a population we're going to get, we're going to need to get very creative.
And this, what we have focused on this year and over this summer is developing a structure for these families who are electing to take the voucher that if they would like to come and take courses, be a part of different opportunities, what does it look like for us to receive payment for those opportunities? What does it cost for those students to be a part of those opportunities? So we've spent really the time building that, and we do have some families who have already reached out because they do want to participate in different courses that we offer here within Flagler schools.
We might want to start highlighting some of those cases, you know, just so that other people know, or at least in a mailer or something. I don't know.
Yes, we really focus right now, we really focus first on building the structure to be able to to take those students versus, you know, saying, hey, come, you still can take courses and be a part of different things within Flagler schools, but we didn't have a structure to be able to allow for that. But we do now.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
I have a question, too. It's just, the money trail. Students, that goes with them. They come back. Does it come back with them? I want to make sure.
So the payments for the scholarships are done quarterly. It's not done for a whole year in advance by the state.
Okay.
So if they were to come back mid-year, their scholarship payments should stop, and they will be counted with our second FTE calc in February, and we would then get credit for that.
Credit. That's why, I just want to make sure we got that.
Portion.
Yeah, the portion. That makes sense. That's what it should be. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. The next slide is a pie chart of general fund expenditures. As you can see, which we discussed many, many times prior, the largest portion of our general fund budget is salaries and benefits. For 24-25, it's at 83%. That does include substitutes. The next largest portion is purchased services at 11%. This includes our property insurance, contracted services such as personnel at schools that we can't hire, staffing specialists, nurses, items like that. It also includes contracts for lobbyists outside council, water sewer. And one of the largest items in this area is our payments to the charter school for the capital outlay. That's a little over $500,000.
Patty, what would other expenses, examples of other expenses and fees be?
Dues and fees. Adults with, I mean, there's a portion of FTC of some of their people who they have to contract with to do various services. It's a very small portion, but the majority of that is dues and fees across the school district.
Thank you.
Go on.
On the next slide is special revenue funds. As we discussed at our last budget meeting, the first column is food service. The second column is our federal grants that we get on a routine basis every year. And the third column is what's left of our federal stabilization, which is our CARES, our ESER funds. And just to note, the federal stabilization grants do end at September 30th of this year. And we do have plans to spend out all of those funds, so we do not send any funds back to DOE. The next page is our debt service funds. Our largest one, as you can see, is our COPS. There is one COPSTER is outstanding, and that's the 2014, that is due to be paid off in 2030, '31 fiscal year. The next page on the capital projects fund. Our largest fund is our 1.5 mil. This is supported by our property taxes of 1.5 mil. And the last column of other capital projects is our half-cent sales tax and our impact fees. The next slide just highlights our uses of the capital outlay funds for this year. This was also part of our advertisement that was presented at the June 23rd meeting. The first half of this section are the large projects handled by plant services. You will see this in the August board meetings on the five-year capital plan. And the second half are other non-project-related items such as FFNE, school buses, vehicles, our debt service payments, and transfers to the general fund that are allowed by Florida statute. The next slide is our permanent funds. This is just one scholarship for $500, paid every year. We will continue to work with legal to address the questions asked at the June 23rd meeting regarding the interest-bearing bank account. The next slide is our self-insurance fund. Based on this budget, we plan to end the year at 6.1 million, which is a healthy fund balance for that fund. As you know, this fund balance is heavily dependent on claims that can go up or down throughout the fiscal year. Our next slide is student enrollment for the past several years. As you can see, this 24-25 and 23-24, there was a spike in enrollment. I do have notes at the bottom that was also on the previous slide for the scholarship that included in our totals is, for 24-25, 1,250 of scholarship students. And in the prior year, it was 798 of scholarship students. The overall increase projected for just the district alone outside of charter schools is approximately 300 students for 24-25. The final slide is our millage rates. This is just to highlight the trend in our millage rates. In '95, '96, we were at our peak as a school district at 11.436 mils total. You can see the downward trend. Our property tax values have continued to increase. However, our millage has continued to decrease. So we do not benefit from, from the increase in property values, which is a pretty big misconception that we are very property-rich. But you can definitely see those trends as they continue to decrease. Our millage at 5.365 combined is, once again, our lowest millage in over 25 years. And just to reiterate, we are the only taxing authority in the county that is not able to set our own millage. I will take any questions on this presentation at this time.
Any further questions?
Just a quick question on the ESER funds. We lose them in September, yet we still are maintaining our 9 million at 2025.
Yes.
How are we doing that?
We were able to use ESER funds in '23, '24. Our senior cabinet superintendent worked with Tammy York to brainstorm ways that we could use those funds to help relieve the pressure off the general fund. So we were able to transfer in over $3 million to relieve some of the pressure from the general fund, knowing that we did not have ESER funds going forward to help our general fund. So we thought forward to make sure that we built up our fund balance to be able to have a pretty balanced budget without going into our general fund dollars.
That leads me to the next question. What happens 2026?
We're taking this year by year.
Yeah, yeah, you can see where my head's going.
We actually, no, so we have discussed this in general in senior cabinet with our superintendent. Just the, the process that we have begun to really figure out what we need to do to focus on what's important, what we have to manage in our budget. The biggest cost, as I just mentioned, is personnel. So it's a matter of getting control of that and making sure that we stay within our confines of what we have. Those conversations have been started. They've been ongoing, and they will continue to be ongoing as we continue to monitor the budget throughout the 24-25 fiscal year.
Thanks.
And I'll add that as a district and as a board, I think we did a really good job at how we utilize those funds so that we did not find ourselves in a situation where we had used so much of them for staff. So we, as a, as a community, we really focused a lot on professional learning. We did bring some staff on, but we didn't use the majority of our funds in that way. And so that allows for us to continue to make adjustments. Now, what the major adjustment will be is the level of professional learning that we've offered over the course of the last couple of years. That will adjust. We've been able to expand our summer opportunities for our students through summer acceleration. We'll have to make some adjustments back to pre-COVID for those things. But as a, as a district and a board, we've done a really good job of ensuring that we haven't taken all of our dollars and put them into staff, and then put ourselves in a situation that we can't maintain going forward. I also like, if it's okay, Chair, to go back to the question from Dr. Conklin about reaching out to families. Today, we received an email from the department letting us know that on August 1st, that a portal is going to go live that will highlight the opportunities that are available at our public, our private, and our charter schools so that families have an opportunity to go in and see what we're offering. We just received that information today. It will allow for us to go in and really showcase the programs and the things that we offer that we can highlight to families as they are looking at different opportunities for their, their child. That information just came out today, and we've been given opportunities for webinars that we'll be able to go on and be a part of, and then that will launch on August 1st. So that will be another means that we will be able to reach out to those families specifically.
Great. I watched the State Board of Ed meeting, and they had some information about it on that, during that time. But I, I'm glad you brought that up. I think one of the things that's important for the public to understand, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but the appearance is, is that we get, let's say, the $10 million, and we distribute it out to those families. That is not the case.
That is correct.
This number is just a number that is in our budget, but it is the state. You know, I almost wish the state should just keep the darn money so that they are then accountable for it, and transparency is on their shoulders.
That is correct, Dr. Conklin. We don't have control over any of these funds. It is simply included in the revenue for the state in our first and second calc, and it is then removed. You'll see that removed in the third calc. We have no control over it. They handle all of the payments to the scholarship families.
It almost makes you wonder why include it in our overall budget.
I think one of the main reasons is this is what they're estimating that this is going to cost for us. And if we don't, they don't hit that, then, you know, we would see that some of those dollars would come to us. But this is what they've kind of put to the side as what it will cost for our scholarships for the year.
Because it could cost more as well.
And as a state, they have, they have done a really good job of keeping some dollars to the side so that a school district is not heavily penalized if those dollars, if that amount is exceeded.
Do we get any sort of report, or is there a report available from the state that shows where the scholarships are being used and in what way?
We in finance don't get a report. There is a portal that Student Services used to be able to look at to see the number of, the students and where they would be zoned for that are taking the scholarship. We used to have to report them into our IS system. That has stopped as of last year. The state completely controls it. They, they create the FTE forecast for the scholarships. When we do FTE forecasting in January, they take in complete control over it. All we have is what is in our FEFP runs.
Just planning-wise and budgeting-wise, it just makes it more even challenging than that. Is there a deadline for the scholarships?
I'm not aware, but I can definitely.
You know how, like, if we have a family that wants to choose to go to a school district, not school district, a school outside of their zone school, we have a deadline for that so that we can plan appropriately for staff, transportation, all the rest of it? Is there a deadline on the FES scholarship?
I'm not aware of it, and knowing how it changes throughout the year, I'm not sure that there really is a deadline, because it just, the numbers constantly change through each calc.
Right. Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the summaries? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Warmack?
Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, I will recess to the public, recess to the public hearing for the reading and adoption of the resolutions. We now move to Agenda Item 3.02, where I'll read the Resolution 24-25-3 for the tentative millage rate to be read by myself. And Resolution Number 24/25-03, whereas the School Board of Flagler County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapter 201,111 Florida statute, approve tentative millage rate for the fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. And whereas, at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statute, the Flagler County School Board adopted the tentative millage rate for fiscal year 2023, 2024 in the amounts of required local effort, including prior period funding adjustment. T tentative millage levy is 3.1170 with a proposed amount to be raised of $57,846,700. Capital outlay, tentative millage levy 1.5. Proposed amount to be raised is $27,837,681. Discretionary operating tentative millage levy is .748. Proposed amount to be raised is $13,881,723. Discretionary capital improvement is zero. Millage rate with zero to be raised. Additional voted millage rate is zero with zero to be raised, and debt is millage rate zero with zero to be raised. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Flagler County School Board adopt each tentative millage rate for the fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025 on July 30th, 2024 by separate vote prior to adopting the tentative budget. So this is the reading, so I will now move to 3.03. Well, I will read the Resolution 2425-4 for the tentative budget. Resolution Number 24/25-04, a resolution of the Flagler County School Board adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Whereas, the School Board of Flagler County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapter 201,011 Florida statute, approve tentative millage rate and tentative budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. And whereas, the Flagler County School Board set forth appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. And whereas, at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the Flagler County School Board adopted the tentative millage rate and budget in the amount of $323,856,170 for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Now therefore, be it resolved that the attached budget of Flagler County School Board, including the millage rate as set forth therein, is hereby adopted by the School Board of Flagler County as tentative budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1st, 2024 and June 30th, 2025. Chair, Furry, Will Furry. So now that the resolutions have been read, we will open for public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment, and we will move on to board member comments. Do we have any board member comments?
No, no comments, other than I'm just appreciative. Where'd Patty go? Thank you for delineating and kind of pointing out. It would be nice if we had a little bit more transparency to share with the public about where those dollars go, but I appreciate the effort including it and breaking it out. So thank you for that.
Okay, seeing no other board member comments, we will now close public hearing and reconvene to public session. Okay, so at this time, we will take action, and I'm requesting board approval of Resolution 24/25-03 to be adopted, to adopt the 2425 tentative millage rate that was read on Agenda Item 3.02. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, and I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, passes unanimously. We will now move to 7.02. We will take action. I have a request the board to approve Resolution 24-25-04 to adopt the 2024-25 tentative budget that was read on Agenda Item 3.03. I need a motion.
Move approval.
A second. I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously, unanimously. So we will move now to Section 8, Citizens' Comments. Not seeing anybody to comment, so we will close comments, and we will move on to board member comments. Are there any further comments? Okay, thank you. Superintendent Moore, do you have any comments to add? Okay, seeing none. This will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Bring me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare ever seen in the sky showed through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We'll now have roll call.
Colin Conklin present.
Char Massaro.
Kristi Chong.
Will Furry.
Sally Hunt.
LaShawka Moore.
Okay, we, at this time, we will recess our public hearing. Before we begin the public hearing, I will need a motion to adopt the agenda on the public hearing approval.
Move approval. Second.
I have approval by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you vote there, Ms. Hunt?
Oh, aye. Sorry about that.
All right, opposed, hearing none, it passes. So we will now move to Item 2.01 for the COPS refunding with Patty Womack.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Furry, Board members, and Superintendent Moore. I'm here this evening to discuss the opportunity to refund a portion of our Series 2014 COPS debt. As presented to you at the June 18th board meeting, the current outstanding balance of this debt is 24.2 million. This debt issuance matures in 2030-31 fiscal year. And in several of the later years, the debt interest is at 5% versus 3%. So at our June 18th meeting, we have recommended to refund, also known as refinancing, several of those years at 5% in an effort to get them down to 3%. The total debt service that was to be refunded at that time was not to exceed 15 million. In the recent week, the market conditions have turned favorable, and our financial advisor that is here with us, Laura Howe, and our bond counsel have now recommended that we take the opportunity to try to refund additional years if the market stays favorable for the benefit of our school district. What that does is it increases our not-to-exceed amount for this refunding from 15 million to 22 million. The change in that amount is part of the resolutions, and as a result, with that verbiage change, we need to change these two resolutions, which is what you will see on board docs. The refunding will not extend the maturity, and the end result would be a potential savings of $650,000 for the district. Previously, it was $440,000. At this time, I would take any questions from the board before discussing the resolutions on board docs.
So if there are no questions, then we will move forward. Okay, so we will move to Section 3, an open public hearing discussion. So just running through, board member comments. Seeing none, we will close board member comments. Public comments. Seeing none, we will close that. Superintendent, okay. So, very good. We will then now move on to Section 4. We will now move on to our public hearing action item 4.01. Ms. Womack to present.
Thank you, Mr. Furry. The first resolution on our board docs today is for the school board. It is identical to what was approved on June 18th, other than the do-not-exceed amount change from 15 million to 22 million.
Was there any additional comments from Ms. Howe?
No, we discussed this thoroughly prior to this meeting.
Okay, very good. All right, so do we have any comments regarding this item? Okay, so I will need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Massaro and a second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to Section 5. With the certificate resolution adopted, we will now recess the public hearing and convene the board as the Board of Directors of the Leasing Corporation.
On this agenda item, this is the second resolution, and this is for the Leasing Corporation. Once again, bless you, it is identical to what the board approved on June 18th, other than the do-not-exceed amount has changed from 15 million to 22 million.
Okay, are there any comments? Okay, I will need a motion on the approval of the corporation resolution Number 24-24-02.
Motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will now reconvene to regular session, and we will move on to public comments. Seeing no one approach, we will close public comment and move on to board member requests. Seeing none, we will move on to upcoming board discussion topics. Any discussion there? Okay, closing comments. Does anybody have any closing comments?
Just a thank you to finance and the finance team. I know it's a lot of work to put all of this together. And I do think moving forward, the more detailed we can be about, especially those those family empowerment dollars, the more transparent we can be on our end. But thank you for all of your work and your team's work on the budget presentation. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I echo those comments as well. Thank you very much. I know this is crunch time for you all, and on top of all the other things that you need to bring forward, I know this is a lot of weight to carry, and you guys do it well, and thank you for a great presentation. And Superintendent Moore?
I think Ms. Massaro had a comment.
Did you? I thought, sorry.
No, I was just going to mention that prior to this meeting, I had the, I was on a workshop meeting with the Assistant Secretary OCR, and they indicated that the, and this is for future reference, they indicated that Florida's challenge to their new regulations, which begin August 1st, was failed. It failed. So the Florida changes to Title IX issues aren't, I'm sure they're going to come back, and they're going to challenge that, but it failed. So we have some changes that we may need to do quickly to make sure we're in compliance because we need that federal money. Just FYI, hot off the press today.
There'll definitely be further discussion on that, so.
Yep.
I just want to say happy last few weeks of summer, and on this Saturday, we will have the back-to-school jam at Flagler Palm Coast High School. So we invite our families to come and be a part of that. That is going to be from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Flagler Palm Coast High School this Saturday.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.